We're going to call the town council work session to order. It is 5:00 PM. It's April 28th, 2020, here in our virtual town hall. We start with planning commission decisions. We had two separate minutes. We got it's from the seventh minute from the 21st. Any questions, anyone?
I have something, I'm sorry, I need to find it. So in the first one, Mr. La Chan says, "Public notice is not required for town projects for the town code." No notice was mailed for this hearing, but notice was posted on the website. If it's, if it's at all possible, I think that would be a good practice for town projects. Is there, I mean, is there any reason why we don't do that? Just because we don't need to, or is there? If we could, I think it would be good.
We don't, we don't normally do those, Erin. We could, I mean, if that's what the council wants, we could have the planning commission notice it. But, you know, it's just a recommendation from the planning commission. The planning commission is not making an actual decision. So, but if that's what you guys want for you, we can do that.
Because you realize we'll, we'll actually present that to the council as a, as a town project, and then council will have the final decision on that. And we post that, right?
Yeah, but we don't, we don't mail notices out on those either, though. And that's, I mean, that's really what Erin's getting at, is that 300-foot, you know, letting your neighbors know.
Eric, do you want, do you want the mail notice both at the planning commission and at the council level?
I mean, I would think so. You know, some of these things people don't care about, but I think there's enough stuff we do. You know, when we get into, I don't know, you know, as we go down the line, there are some things that'll be bigger. I would rather have neighbors know about it than find out about it later. How's the rest of the council feel, Jeffrey?
I'm okay. If, I'll kind of go with the crowd on this one. I, if, it's already, it's going to be passed by the planning commission. I mean, so it's already been vetted, but yeah, I think for transparency, it doesn't hurt.
I think it's good if it starts at the planning commission level, because it's just, I think it's easier to work out situations there. It seems a little unfortunate to wait, you know, for some public input until the 11th hour at council.
Gary?
I think you're on mute. Oh.
Eric, was it you that said that anyone in a 300-foot radius still gets notification, right?
Yeah, they don't currently on town projects, but we're saying that we probably should do that going forward.
Dennis, just, just so we're clear, town projects are not subject to the development code. They have their own special class of treatment, and that's, that's why we have not done the notice as required by the development code, because the development code doesn't control a town project.
I didn't realize that. Thank you. We, hey Dennis, we have sort of historically, most councils have sort of moved in the direction of, yeah, you don't have to follow the code, but we want it to follow the code. We've, we generally give the planning commission, unless there's some piece of that that, you know, benefits the public greater for the public entity to follow a different regulation or not to follow regulation. In general, we want to line up with the development community, just so they don't say, well, why don't you follow the rules? So, why don't you follow your own rule? Correct.
Okay.
Dick?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I think we should.
Tim, if we could move towards that change, that'd be great.
Eric, I'll, I'll draft an ordinance. We need to amend the town projects ordinance to require the notice, and I'll get that done.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anything else on planning commission decisions?
Hey, Eric, before, before you go into legislative, can I say a couple things?
Absolutely.
So I want to suggest to the council that we hold another special meeting a week from today on Tuesday, May 5th, at four o'clock, if that continues to work for you all. I think there are, here's my, here's my challenge. Number one, I think we, we talked about meeting at least weekly during this crisis, and, and today we have a fairly full agenda, and I think there are a number of issues that probably many of you would like to get into relative to COVID updates, as far as, you know, our grant program, the rental relief stuff, some, you know, our recovery committee and the work that's getting done there. There's a couple of things we have to discuss today relative to that. You know, and the kind of what our town plans are relative to when we're thinking about partial reopening of, you know, town hall and some things like that. And I just think that, you know, having these types of meetings that go over three hours or up to three hours is very challenging. And so I'd rather hold off on some of these things and do it during a special meeting, except there's a couple of things we need to discuss today, and certainly any issues that are paramount important for you to discuss today. But I'd like to get your agreement that, that we would do a special meeting on Tuesday, knowing that we're going to go into more detail on some COVID update things. I also want to start, I want to give some financial updates and maybe start having some earlier discussion on some other scenarios if we have to, you know, look at some other tier, tier cuts on that. Brian has started to assemble some additional March data that's not in your packet, but he, we could present some of that to you on Tuesday, also as those March numbers are rolling in now, so.
That sounds good. How's everybody feel about that? Thumbs up, thumbs down? Okay, all right, so we'll do that. In the meantime, can we have Gary and Dennis as the housing, the housing members start looking into potential Phase 3 of some rent relief?
Rent relief or grant, the grant program, you mean?
Grant program, yeah. Yeah, looking into some grant program. Gary and Dennis, are you okay with getting on it? To you, so you can have some information for us next Tuesday about what kind of guidance you'll give us?
So we'll set, we'll get a call going this week, okay?
Okay. With them. Gary? All right, great. Anything else, Rick?
No, thank you.
Okay, we're going to go to legislative review. We begin with sustainable building code. Those will be on for second reading tonight. Eli?
Right, hello, council. Hello, Mayor Mamula. This will be the second reading for the Summit Sustainable Building Code. Just to briefly go into it, you know, that we had a year-long process to, to vet both commercial and residential energy codes. So we've, we've got a zero-energy-ready program, and we are amending the IECC for the commercial provisions. I did address the builders' concerns that we received during, right before our first reading on February 25th. I outlined those, those issues that they had. We have done more cost comparison and, and come up with some costing estimates for the zero-energy-ready program. And we have tried to respond again to the use of exterior insulation on buildings. This will be an option in the zero-energy-ready program that they can choose. But again, we have been seeing this on commercial projects throughout the town. There was one issue that was brought up in Pitt County on some wall failures. That came down to improper installation. So if it is used properly and installed properly, it can work very well and eliminate moisture issues within the wall cavity. I know that High Country Conservation is working to promote more hers raiders within Summit County right now. So I think that that will not be an issue as this moves forward, that the, the need for those will be filled in the county and in adjacent counties to, to come in and deal with that, with that issue. I've been working with the Summit County Builders Association on, on some of these costing measures. There is still some concern out there, but they, they are agreeing that, you know, the zero-energy-ready program will, will be adding essentially 1% to 2% cost increase just for that program, not including any updates that we've done in the past as far as the 2018 building code that we adopted in December. So we're, we're going to continue to work with the Summit County Builders Association, Summit County Building Department to monitor this program as it goes into effect on July 1st for the trial period, when we're actually running through the program. So we'll be having more committee updates to monitor how the program is working and then giving recommendations towards the end of the six months to decide if we'll be ready to go on January 1st, 2021, or if we still need, or are having issues and need to reevaluate possibly a longer grace period on that, depending how that goes. So we will continue to work with all of those groups to, to see how this program is coming together. And then lastly, we did have two very small changes to the amendment package. These were regarding additions below 1,500 square feet, and those, those will still allow the use of an R-23 in the cavity instead of mandating an exterior insulation. So that would be for an addition. It could, there's just various construction issues that could come up if you're trying to use this exterior insulation with a house that doesn't have it. So we've, we've carried that over. That's the only change that we have in our, in our ordinance at this point. So I'm available for any questions that anybody has at this point.
Thanks, Eli. Julia, did you have anything to add?
I don't have anything to add to that.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Eli, it's a 1% to 2%, 1% to 2% increase from when we, when we most recently updated the 2018 code. Do we, do you have any guesstimate of what it is from, say, 2018, 2015 to now, to the new proposed code? How much increase in building costs it would be?
Yeah, so that, you know, that's, that's hard to put an exact number on, but we're definitely above the 1% to 2%. I think we're anywhere between 5% and 10% cost increase with the addition of the 2018 code from the 2012, and then with the, now the addition of the zero-energy-ready program, probably putting us in the 5% to 10% range cost increase.
Okay.
Eli, thanks so much for that table that compares the construction cost per square foot. That was really, really helpful, and I think just showing that, you know, things can still be done in an economic way was really important for us, understanding whether our, this is the right choice for our community.
Great, thanks, Kelly. The credit for that goes to High Country Conservation and Jess Hoover. They did a great job with assisting the, all the building departments with that. So we owe them a lot of credit for, for helping us out to crunch these numbers and put that stuff together.
Yeah, I, I echo Kelly's comments and appreciate the fact that you're listening to our building community and, and responding. So thanks, Eli.
For sure.
Other questions? Okay, Eli, thank you.
Of course.
We have an employee generation code amendment that we are going to continue. Do we need to, any discussion on this, Tim?
Not really. We've, at staff level, have continued to work on this ordinance. We're just not quite there yet. And so it's staff's recommendation that second reading of council number seven be continued to the 8th, 26th meeting.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Tim. Public Accommodation Tax Ordinance.
This, this is mine. This is second reading, an ordinance that will revise the town's public accommodation ordinance to adopt the language of the Denver Short Term Rental Ordinance that was upheld by the Colorado Supreme Court a couple of years ago. As council, I think, is aware, maybe Dennis hasn't heard this just yet, but the town litigated with a number of online travel companies all the way to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court was equally divided, 3-3, and as a result, we ended up losing the case. The thought process in asking that the ordinance be adopted, or be adopted in Denver language is the Denver, which has already been upheld by the Supreme Court. And we think that if we can, can adopt that language, that we might have a much better chance of getting the online travel companies to, to comply. So that's the thought behind it. There are no changes from first reading.
All right, everybody get this one. Any questions? Dennis, you're good?
To be clear, we're not raising the tax at all. We're just changing the language.
Yes, that is, that's correct.
Okay.
Tax and spend bursary on, they call them. All right, any problems with this? Second reading? Nope? All right. We have an ordinance approving the sale of partial interest in the smuggler claims. This is first reading on the, this is Mr. Reed.
Yep, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before he's on first reading, is a, the sale of 50% interest in the smuggler claims, which we purchased in January of this year, being the town. We, in buyer, I'm sorry, the seller at the time was unwilling to work with the county, so we purchased it ourselves and planned to sell the 50% to the county at a later date, which is, this is the first reading to, to have. This is the Matt Katie, if you will, up the hill, above Wellington neighborhood. It'll bring a significant portion of proceeds back to the space fund as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Questions for Scott?
Hey Scott, I'm sorry, but you cut out, just as I was getting part of that. This is the claim just past McCleary's house, as you go up past his house around the turn. Every, to Wellington, okay, thank you.
Yes.
So, you get yelled at all the time.
You used to. So, Scott, we'll own 50%, OSAC will own 50%? Correct. It's a joint 50-50 town-county split, and per our intergovernmental agreement that we have regarding ownership of those lands, we split. We generally split costs along the line if we ever do anything with, talk in a minute here about the trail costs, but in general, we typically split those costs 50-50, but for stewardship efforts.
How about, how about any decision-making that's required? I'm not sure what that might be, but just any decision-making that may be required? Who kind of, who kind of has little, like a 51, 51-49 kind of notion, or?
The decision-making for management is really 50-50, and it's outlined in the agreement that we have with the county. So there's a pretty significant document that outlines how that works, and I'd be happy to get more specific if you like. But in general, if we jointly own 50-50, we make decisions jointly as well.
And in the past, that has worked out well?
Yes, the majority of our acreage actually is jointly owned with the county.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Everybody good on this one tonight?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
We got Brick Professional Building Long-Term Lease Agreement. This is a Zwig Laura firm, and this is going to be a five-year agreement, Rick?
Yeah, we have an opportunity with one of our current tenants over there who wants to, their lease is set to expire, coming up, and they want to enter into a five-year lease agreement, which is great. They're a great tenant over there, local law firm. And, you know, recently we passed that legislation that allowed me to enter into those leases up to three years. So, you know, typically, typically the ordinance requires anything longer than a year, but you gave me up to three years on the professional building. But since this is five-year, it just needs to pass with you guys on an ordinance. Everything's standard on it, so we recommend it.
Hey, hey, Rick. Or, I know we talked about this before, and it, I can't remember the result, but did we pick a year sometime in the future, say 2030 or whatever, where we'll stop renewing leases through that time? Just, or stop giving options? Because this is a five-year with five-year option, right? And so it potentially takes us out to 2030, and, which I'm fine with it. You know, I, I think that's fine. But I think at some point, we don't want to tie future council's hands. And I think we pick a year where we just say, yeah, you know, we're not going to tie anything up past this year. I may suggest 2030 is maybe the, the right year.
You know, I vaguely recall that discussion, so, you know, I think it's a good reminder, if that's your desire, we need to make sure that we communicate that. So how's everybody feel about? I'm assuming you want to make sure that if we need that building for something else at some point in the future, we want to have it available to us.
Yeah, I just want to keep options open. I mean, I want to be fair to our tenants, but I also want to keep options open. I think, you know, if we go out 10 years from now, you know, that's, that's certainly good for the tenants and gives us, then, then we have options in 10 years.
Yeah.
That's a good point, Dick.
I'm fine with 2030, but perhaps in the same note, we also include that the council, I don't know, in six years, so that they're four years out, they, they address it then. Yeah, so that it's not 2030, and then all of a sudden, there aren't any leases, and where the council's having the conversation a little too late.
Yeah, yeah, I totally agree, Erin, because that way, we don't want to tie hands in signing leases. We don't want them, the tenants, to be wondering either, so that's great for it.
Fair enough. Everybody good with this? Yes. Okay. All right, final bit of legislation is Recreation Road and Trail Management IGA with Summit County. Scott?
Hey, thanks again. So as I discussed briefly a minute ago, we have an existing intergovernmental agreement with Summit County to outline how the managed properties, the jointly-owned properties lined out. That's been in place since 2011, and it's worked well. And the one thing that we noticed that is lacking is kind of an agreement on how we maintain like trails themselves, and the roads as well, and recreational roads. So what you have before you is basically, I'll also add that the Summit County signed the Special Use Office with the US Forest Service last year to be the, basically to help maintain some of the forest trails as well. And we agree to be part of that, and wanted to be, but only one proponent could be listed with the Forest Service. So this, this IGA does two things essentially. It allows us to, with a lot of the joint trail work that we've been doing, a way that is clear and kind of outlines the, you know, the way we approach these costs and these projects. It also allows us to be theory of helping take care of the forest, the trails on the national forest, which cannot really be done, whereas, you know, being under the Special Use Office. So that's what you have before you, is a resolution to allow us, you have a copy of the, the IGAs and the attachment, which outlines how we plan to, you know, work out the details with, with regard to all the agreements on trail costs and road maintenance within the Golden Horseshoe section. It does include all the land, so it is larger than the Golden Horseshoe, but the primary area would be with the Golden Horseshoe section. Happy to answer any questions.
What was that last sentence?
I don't know, Reed doesn't have fiber out there where he's at.
What, do you get dial-up in Summit County?
Your internet's not good, Scott. You're very broken.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering what you said. You said it's more than the, or it's the whole Golden Horseshoe, so it was something about the area?
Yeah. Certainly, it's a large part, about half of the Golden Horseshoe itself is jointly-owned. The other remain, the remaining portion of that is national forest. But this agreement applies to all joint lands, so it includes areas within the Golden Horseshoe, but also Barney Ford and that kind of stuff as well.
Okay, thanks for that, sorry.
Scott, I know this is a long shot. Do you have any projection of what the costs will be to, our costs will be, and will we get reimbursed by the Forest Service for any costs that we incur? Fixing trails, you know, maintaining, maintaining the trails?
Yes, I think, I think we had this conversation before at one point, I think. But we basically are taking this on because we want to have more control over the trails. Yeah. National forest. So depends on the project, or how much it's going to cost us to do this. It's an incremental cost, given our, you know, our program and, you know, even given current circumstances, and the national forest, which has zero funding. So it's opportunity for us to get, to, to take care of the trails that we would like to take care of and continue doing a lot of the work that we're currently doing. Incremental costs, I wouldn't say is significant. It was one of the reasons we added two new trail crew members. We planned to add two new trail crew members this summer, but since have taken that away because of the, the current circumstances. So I can't give you an estimate of how much it costs, but it's something that we willingly were going to take on because the Forest Service was lacking in their ability to do so.
Everybody good? Makes sense?
Yep.
Yeah, and I was just going to point out, Jeffrey, that the, in the open space budget, we only spend on trails' construction and maintenance, like, less than $400,000. So in the overall picture and budget, it's a, like, pretty reasonable number for the amount of trail, the miles of trails we have. And don't wait around to let the federal government reimburse you also.
Well, I'm sure the town is going to get a stimulus check, too.
Oh, hi, Alan.
Did you fix that?
Is that the sheet?
Yeah, it fell out.
All right, any other questions on the? I think that doesn't know. Scott, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Projects update.
Okay, I had to tape that up because I'm blinding everybody. Can we tape it up again?
Go ahead, Shannon.
Oh, where are we at?
We're on public projects. Let's go. Focus, focus. Shannon, all you.
They're watching, Jeffrey, forgetting about that. So, you had, you got Shannon here to talk about any public project questions. There's quite a few infrastructure projects that are getting started out there, so fire away.
Have at it.
Sure, I don't have anything to add to the memo, but I am happy to take any questions that you have of any of the projects.
Have we heard anything from anybody about the fiber since it's been going on for a couple of days now?
Generally, all, everything we've heard has been very positive. We had a couple of business owners call us about some really minor problems, but it was taken care of really quickly.
Very good. They should know what they're doing by this time, the construction guys.
Absolutely.
It's actually good to see they're not working already this early in the season.
Yeah.
Yeah, the weather's been cooperating. It's been great.
And I, I know we have this information, but can you remind me, when will that be finished? When will, when are we projecting that, the fiber will be finished in the core of town? On Main Street? Or is that just all summer?
We're focusing downtown core now, so I think it should just be a few more weeks, and then we'll move to the outreaches. We're going with a reduced crew right now, and then to get right out of downtown.
Okay, that's great. Yeah.
Any questions on any of the other projects, guys? Asphalt, concrete, river park, French Street rail repair? No? No. All right, thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Are you doing P and T also, or is?
I'm going to say a couple of things on that.
Okay, go ahead, Rick.
So, as you know, Summit Stage started a very limited route-to-route bus service yesterday. We're seeing very low numbers coming in or out of Brack. I think for the whole day yesterday, there were 16 people that probably left Brack or gave you to Brack, which, you know, is not a big number. Currently, we couldn't run transit if we wanted to, because it's still, it's, it's, bus service is prohibited under the county health order, and, you know, except, with the exception of the Summit Stage, which, which is five. which, which is fine. I, I would suggest that we should be looking, you know, we may not really want to look at starting it up too much until we get closer to the end of May. Honestly, there are some things that we're looking at and retrofitting some Plexiglas to create a, a safe zone up there for the driver. You know, we have the grant money that, that is going to pay the cost of our drivers to keep them employed. And so once we start the route back up, you know, and run a bus that's basically empty, we're paying those people again. So it's advantageous for us to, I think, to wait for that right time, whatever that right time is. And I think we'll know it as it gets closer. We need about a week to pull the trigger on some transit routes. So let's just keep that in mind as we're thinking ahead. But right now, our thinking right now is probably closer to the end of the month. And if we think we want to look at the gray route as a standalone before that, we will have plenty of opportunities to discuss that. But just to keep us all in the loop, I want to make sure that, you know, you guys are okay with that as we're kind of going forward right now.
We, are we paying our drivers? Will we be able to hit the ground running when it come, when we decide to fire up our transit system?
Yeah, with some exceptions, I said, I think, you know, our plan is to have a somewhat of a reduced route this, this summer and only run five routes, which would be, you know, we're probably only going to run one purple and we may change the direction midday or something. We may experiment with that. We'll, we may start off with just one trolley. But we'll talk more about what the trolley could look like a little later. But yeah, so we just need a few days notice. But the good news is, yes, we're keeping our drivers paid full. That the grant that we're getting from the state is almost, it's not, I mean, it's, it's part of this funding through transit to help keep transit operational or keep it, because they know how challenging it can be. And right now we're earmarked for $700,000 on that to help fund, you know, this. We have to be able to spend that. We don't get to keep it, use it for other stuff, but it will help to cover one of our biggest costs, which is payroll right now during, what's it been, six, at least six weeks? We've been paying, you know, those drivers and they haven't been, haven't been working. So that's a good thing for them and us right now.
Everybody good with that approach? Wait till end of May to start really thinking about, starting with just the gray route to start? And then sort of, you know, let them expand as the, we get into the summer, depending what happens?
Yeah, I would, I would like to talk about it again before, before we get closer to opening.
We will.
Great. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on P and T, Rick?
No.
Housing and childcare, anything?
No. No community reports. Brian, I think is available if you have any questions on the financials. They're mostly, these are again your February numbers.
I, I have one question. Hey, Brian, why, why were the out of town retail collections for, I think that was for February, down so much? Do you know?
Let me take a look. So you're looking at the page that compares the in town and out of town. Is that correct?
Yeah, I was looking at just the out of town compared to last year.
I'm just getting to that page. Give me a second there. All right, computer froze up. It's good timing. I will get the details on that, Dick, and get it, get back to you. It could be because last year we were having people catch up because of the Wayfair. Excuse me.
Gotcha. No, no big deal.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll research that and I'll get an email to Rick and he can pass it back to you guys, okay?
Yeah, along the same, same line is, do you know why the disposable bags were down so much in January and February? Like half as many years? As last year?
I think we had an issue with potential missing return for that. And that is also something we can true up and get back to the details on that one. I'm, uh, and we have another question. Can somebody just, one more so I can? Because one for three is not bad. One for three, you make $10 million a year in, in the, in the big leagues.
What did you just say about the disposable bags, a reporting problem? What was it?
It could be a missing return issue.
Oh, what's that? What does that mean? What's a missing return issue?
Uh, there is a return for, for bag fees. In other words, the retailers who use bags fill out a return that says how many bags they have given out and how much they've collected in the fees.
Oh, okay.
One or two of those are going to be missing. Some of them could have a pretty big effect on that number.
Okay.
All right, one for three.
Brian, I'm going to throw you up a softball here.
Thank you.
What is Weedtail?
The new guy.
Retail?
That, that has a little, not to take too long, but that has a little story to it. We, that was kind of our, our, our funny name for the marijuana retail sector. And we, we kept it internal finance. It's kind of a goofy thing, but it actually got out in a memo. And Warner in particular loved it, so it's stuck and we've been using it ever since. It goes way back.
Thank you.
And just to let the group know, like Rick had said earlier, we're looking on, we're looking at reworking a lot of our estimate, estimates going forward. Heather and Leslie are compiling as quickly as they can the returns that we're getting in. From what we've seen so far, our 50% estimate, because we kind of missed half the month in terms of days, might actually be pretty close to what we're going to see come in. We're about two thirds of the way there on returns filed. And Express Bill Pay actually did start working. I, I'd mentioned last week that they were pulling the site down to do a quick maintenance thing, which appears to have actually worked. So we're hoping that for the April returns due May 20th, we won't have to, you know, make any kind of adjustments or delays or anything like that. So that's the latest on that.
Are we still calling April zero right now or close to zero?
Yep, we, we pretty much shut April off, understanding that there's still some stuff operating, but you, you change things 5, 10%. It's really only a few hundred grand in terms of the final number for the year. But I'm looking at the stuff every week, in particular RET. I've been talking to a lot of the title companies. For example, right now we're at $400,000 for RET versus about a $500,000 budget for April. So we only have a couple more days left in April. So that's going to inform, you know, what kind of REIT projection we can do going forward. And, and the pipeline is kind of drying up for closings that, you know, which is kind of intuitive, which is what I'm hearing back from the title companies. So, you know, that, we're doing that kind of local stuff, also looking at statewide trending and reports that are always coming out for, you know, the tourism industry. And we'll be revising stuff every week and getting it to Rick and Shannon and then going from there.
And are you similarly, are, are you still feeling confident in the 40% projection for sales tax across the year?
Yeah, yeah, I think we'll, we'll end up in that range. And, you know, each 10% that we do, I should say that the value of 5% change in sales tax is about $1.4 million if you, if you account for sales tax and accommodations. So really I'm going to try to zero it into the nearest, you know, 5%, 10%. And our, you know, I don't want the right term, you know, margin for error or our reserves, you know, can absorb that kind of difference if we go from 40 to 50 or, or, you know, change on that kind of order. So that's really what we're trying to get. So the quick answer to your question is, yeah, that, that's still where we're at. But, um, we're going to be revising it weekly as, as things change.
Ryan, as Rick, Rick said earlier, I think our next special council meeting next week, I think we should really talk really about this issue in quite some detail. If you look at virtually what every organization across the country is doing, as well as our, even our own resident arts organizations. I mean, they're really looking at this at what they call a black swan event, which is, which means something that's very rare, unpredictable, that has grave consequences. And I, I, I think that we as an organization should be sure that we are also looking at it that way, preparing for the worst, hoping for the best. And so I think as a council, we, we need to kind of figure out just what kind of hits do we think we want to put into the model and see what decisions would then have to be made by, by town council if in fact something like that happened. I, I said to Rick earlier, I know a lot of times there's a lot of conversations between municipalities and cities and here's what we're doing and blah, blah, blah. And then it kind of becomes a herd mentality in terms of, oh yeah, we'll settle here. I really would like to avoid that and really have us do our own independent thinking and, and come up with, you know, scenarios that we really think are more dire than perhaps we're thinking about right now and what we would do about it.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, since we set that projection at 40%, I think things have definitely changed. You know, a lot of the information that's come out about the 1918 epidemic and the second wave. And, you know, I'd be psyched right now if we hit 40% for the months after, starting in July.
I, I think it's too optimistic, so let's have that conversation.
I, I'm with you. I think if we're at 25%, I'd probably be happy right now, so.
And that, that's been the goal of what we're going to, what we're going to present. And that was Rick's directive is to try to present an array of possibilities, kind of a sensitivity analysis and let council have the discussion about, you know, how, you know, maybe different tiers of different scenarios and, you know, different downturns. And, you know, as I'm looking at it now, we do have, you know, April and May shut off. In other words, April and May is a hundred percent reduction in revenue. But and I, as I, you know, spoke with Gary a while ago, it also incorporates, you know, an assumption that June would be down 40%, which is an assumption that maybe sounded okay 10 days ago.
Not anymore.
Now, when you look at it, you're kind of like, hey, that, that's got to change. So we're going to give you guys an array of, of, you know, decreases.
Because there's really a lot of things going on out there. I, I shared with Rick earlier this afternoon, I was talking to some folks that I know in the financial industry across the country. And boy, what they're saying is that the private corporations in particular are very, very concerned about the balance of the year for their businesses. And what they're doing now, they're taking down their lines of credit, even though they don't need the money today. They're taking down their lines of credit so that the banks in the future can't find some reason in the documents to preclude them from pulling their, down their lines of credit. And they're taking that money down, the cash, and then they're just depositing it in their bank account and letting it sit there because they're that concerned. A, a good example is Six Flags Over Texas just took down three quarters of a billion dollars under their line of credit because they figured that their revenues are going to get hammered this year. And so that they would have money available to go into 2021. And other corporations and companies are doing that right now. They're, they're pulling all their bank lines and they're going to cash because they're really concerned what their revenues may look like for the rest of the year. So that's where I, I would really like to see us have a good, good conversation around that subject. Gary, what is the line of, what do you mean the line of credit? So if a company can borrow money, they'll borrow a, a bunch of money, hold that in cash in case they need that money later? Is that what a line of credit is? Yeah, a line of credit, what companies do with a line of credit is basically go to their bank and they say, look, we'd like to set up a line of credit for X dollars. We may never use it, but we want to know the availability is there if we want to use it. How much we can borrow? How much we can borrow under that line of credit? I get you, okay. Generally unsecured. And it's, you know, and company, and some companies never use their lines of credit, but they all have lines of credit to handle surprises and, and so on and so forth. And now with these, what they call the black swan events occurring, they're, they're pulling their lines down. They want cash available where they don't have to go back to the bank when the shit hits the fan for them and negotiate with the bank, hey, we need a loan. They already have the right to pull that money down and that's what they're doing before. They're, see, they're concerned, the last time there was some crises, what happened with these lines of credits? The banks found reasons under the documentation to say, oh, you're not, you're at the fault of some little thing. And oh, by the way, you can't, you can't use that money. They're pulling it down now before the banks ever get to that, can create that kind of situation for them because that's how concerned they are. That, so it says a general, a general attitude of pessimism. Right? Yeah, lots of pessimism out there right now across, across the board. Sorry to interrupt.
Gary, are you, oh no, it's okay. No, it's fine. Are you talking about the last, the last time there was a crisis was in 2008? Or are you talking about beforehand, but like? Something greater?
No, it happened back in '08.
Okay.
And that's when the government stepped in and they became, they became the lender of that resort. But it's happened in every critical cycle where the banks get, they get terribly concerned about their own capital positions. And, and they start to look sometimes for reasons, not all of them and not all the time, but at times they'll look for reasons to say, you know, you're just not in compliance with something. So you don't have the right to pull, to pull, to take down that line of credit, even though you thought you had the right. So that's why companies right now are sufficiently concerned that they are doing it in advance of, and they may never, they may never have to use it, but they are really planning that if they need to, it's there for them.
So we'll, we'll talk about that on Tuesday. I, I think this is just the beginning of this, Gary.
It is.
We're, we're at the start, so.
It is. It's going to get a lot worse.
And if I may just very quickly circle back, our staff has been listening and Heather has emailed me real quick just to let me know there were a couple of really big returns filed for out of town retailers last February. So last February is more of an aberration than, you know, this February being low. And then also I was incorrect in guessing that there was perhaps missing returns. We really just saw a decrease in bags being distributed. So it, we had the returns there, but there just seemed to be a decrease, so.
Well, when things get back to normal, we can start talking about the bag program again, I think.
It's the least of our worries right now.
On that one for the timing.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
It's always good to have good people behind you, Brian.
They make me look good, right? I was going to say, oh, I just remembered, but they're still listening, so I get choked.
Nice. Rec些建议 update.
You have the minutes from your April 1st meeting that Erin was at, so if you have any questions for her, for her?
I attended remotely.
Good.
We all did.
Be safe, right?
We all attended remotely. Yeah. I mean, and, and really the gist of it is we don't know, right? We don't know when things will start getting, you know, when we'll be able to have events again. And so we went around the virtual room and gave updates, but there's not a lot to report.
I would like, I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I think the council should just cancel all events through the end of June right now and put that out in the community that if, if you are, you know, if you're connected to the town in any way, whatever event you have through the end of June, cancel right now. I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
I think that's smart.
I agree, and I should also add that the BTO, I know you just said through the end of June, but first event that comes to mind in July is 4th of July. Nothing in stone. They're all cancelable and yeah, refundable, all of that good stuff. And it's probably smaller, but there's, it's, it's not a problem to cancel.
Right. Anything else on events, gang?
Just one thing, I know the BTO is still wanting to do a Memorial Day commemorative service, but they want to do a virtual service for Memorial Day. And so, you know, they're going to be looking for one of you that would be willing to actually log in and be part of that virtual service on Memorial Day.
Okay. We still have some time on that, so Dick, are you interested?
Yeah, I'm happy to. I did it last year. It was pretty cool. So I'm, I'm happy to do it again this year unless someone else wants to.
No, you did a great job last year, Dick.
Okay, we'll have the PHA get you the login information.
Okay.
All right, perfect. Okay, let's move on. We have stated the open space report. This is really more of an FYI for everybody to read. I always like, I always like seeing this thing. It really just highlights what an amazing program Jeffrey was responsible for. He's still riding the coattails of that one, aren't you?
It's, it's totally diluted my felony conviction.
Scott, anything to add?
Hey, I, I agree with what Eric, you just said. I don't want to belabor the point. I just do want to point out that the vast majority of the, the. the vast majority of the, the State of the Open Space Report itself is developed by Ann. A lot of her pictures and the layout is all done in-house, and I think she does an outstanding job. And not to mention carrying the program as well, much better than the prior, prior directors, I was, I've been told. So anyway, yeah, you're welcome to ask any questions you have. I'm really here on her behalf. And thanks for your guys' support, I think, in this time as far as the value of that program to our community is even highlighted, so.
I, I think if you're, you know, to the, to the crew in the audience right now, this is something that you really should take the time to go on the town's website and look through. It, it's beautifully done. But aside from that, though, the, the depth of this program it, that started in 1997, the fact that we have used $22 million to save almost 5,000 acres and build over 60 miles of trails is stunning. That a small town like this can pull that kind of thing off. So if you have time, I would suggest, you know, pull it up, have a look. It's very cool to see what, how that, that program has grown over the years, so. Scott, thanks to you and the staff for all the hard work, too. That's, it doesn't get done without a dedicated group of people.
Well said, Eric.
I echo that.
Anyone else?
No, I think this, the program now, even despite our financial worries, is as strong as I've ever seen it. With, with the crew and Ann, and Scott, I'm very encouraged. And I think this is gonna pay dividends. This is, this is what people are gonna look forward to when we can finally get out on a regular basis without, without worry.
Yeah.
Completely agree.
All right. We have the Logan Thompson Memorial Sculpture Town Project. Julia?
Hi, make sure you can hear me. All right, great. Thanks so much. Just real briefly, on the Logan Thompson Sculpture Town Project, this has been brought to us through the Breckenridge Creative Arts Group. And it is a memorial sculpture to Logan Thompson. And it stands at 16 feet tall. And it would be located along the recreation path near the skateboard park. It'd be located six feet from the rec path edge. And would have a little turnout of a crusher fine pad for people to pull off and, and look at the sculpture, which is of a snowboarder doing an indie grab. And it would be located right there near the skate park to also tie into that there as well. We are just looking for town council approval on this. It is a town project. It did not go to planning commission as it was too small of a scale project for that. I'm happy to take any questions as well.
I had a question about the location. It feels to me that this is like the business side of the rec path. You know, this is where like people are really biking quickly and kids are, you know, coming and going, and it's a very blind corner, and I know that was mentioned. I'm just curious why it's not on the other side, like where that artistic bridge is? Just so that we could sort of group the arts and then not, not have this like new piece of art that's right on top of the bike path. Was that discussed at all?
I was not in the committee that sort of chose this location. My understanding is that the location was chosen so that you had a view of it from the skate park. And sort of that wave design sort of ties in a little bit with the skate park and the river. So, this map is a little bit misleading because it doesn't show that it's six feet from the rec path. So that would be something that they would have to do and, and they're aware of that.
That location was actually, that's one of the locations that was vetted when we looked at the,
Way Way.
Way Way?
Yeah.
But again, we, we knew Way Way would draw even more. And we're not sure this will, will be a draw to people, but other than, it will certainly be, you know, a nice addition to our art inventory for the many people that go by there, but.
I'm, I'm comfortable with that, the, the six feet kind of crusher pine, a crusher fine pull off and stuff. I think this is, and I like, I like the looks of it. And I think this is a, a nice, nice tribute to, and I, and I do think that the people that probably know him the best would be the folks that frequent the skate park.
Yeah, I think it's a super cool project, too. And Kelly, I also cheer your concern a bit. I can't remember, do we have a sign on the bike path? You know, if you're coming south, getting ready to come into that blind turn to, to encourage cyclists to slow down. It is kind of a busy area, so it may be a good, good sign to post there anyway. Just to slow before you come into that turn.
It's not a bad idea, Dick.
Yeah, it is.
I, I agree. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful project. I don't think that six feet is a lot, honestly, to be out of the, the rec path. I, and I agree, that's a busy area. You, I just worry about everybody on bikes not paying attention and like, oh, looking at this art and there's this corner and people might, it might encourage people to stand in the rec path. I just, I don't know. I, I feel like it could be maybe a better place somewhere else. Around the skate park. I think obviously it needs to be near the skate park, but why so close to the rec path? I'm not sold on.
Is there a downside to pushing it back further?
Let me, let me, let, let us look at that internally. I'm not sure. I, I gotta tell you, my initial reaction in looking at it was wondering why it was closer to. I'm not sure what, what we're preserving as far as that space to not push it back. So, let us talk about that and, and, and we'll make a commitment that we'll, we'll try to get it pushed back a little farther into that area there.
You know, it'd be nice.
Or even closer, a little bit closer to the skate park, just so that it's not right on the blind corner.
Yeah. It'd be, I don't know.
Thanks.
When they were gonna do the Way Way, Kelly and I took a walk out there and it was, and they had it marked. It'd be nice to have it just a little, a little flag, little flagging, just so the next couple of days we can take a look at the proposed location, just to get a better sense. I, I can't, you know, I can't picture it totally clearly. Yeah.
Eric, I see Scott might have something to add.
Yeah, go ahead, Scott.
So, we did look at that, we, taking that, when that, those questions into consideration, the reason we didn't want to put it at the top, at the back, kind of where the skate park is and the drop-in from that east side, is because that preserves that land for a potential second smaller bowl in there for the skate park itself. So if there ever to be a, if there were ever to be an expansion to the skate park, there are two places we can go. One is on a small bowl at the top of that, and the other one is that, the long drainage to the north. So that's why we kind of tried to site it such that it was far enough away from the rec path, but also out of the way of potential, any kind of work you would ever want to expand the skate park.
What about closer to the shelter?
Yeah, exactly. So that, that level from the shelter, that area is where we would potentially put that. It'd be like a little, like a beginner bowl would be the spot, be the idea there.
Okay.
So there could be, a viable option would be, I don't, I really doubt that we would be expanding the, the, the skate park in the next five, the 10 years. So you could put, you could move it farther up. It's not like it would be a major project to move it, to move it in the future if you ever did expand it. You'd just be setting a new base and moving, moving it if you decided to do an expansion, so.
But you'd probably need the families, you'd need the family's permission and approval, wouldn't you, to re-site it?
I'd have to check, but usually those conditions allow us some flexibility in that.
Yeah, I think we need to look at that because it made a significant investment. There's a lot of emotion.
We committed to have it in that same area. We, we can look at that.
Let's just see what we can do. I mean, there's a lot of emotion in this particular piece of art and that email you sent us earlier in the day, Rick, and, you know, the story of the young man, it's, you know, very heartfelt.
Yeah. So, and I think you're all supportive of the art piece and like the art piece, it's just the location we, and, and I agree, let's fine tune it because we know people, we know people can just stop, right? They could be on their bike and stop right in the path to look at something.
And they will.
Concerned us with Way Way, so.
Yeah. Scott, will you flag it? As someone asked Scott, Julia, will you flag it just the next couple of days, just so we can look?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
All right. Okay, you on that, Rick?
Yeah.
All right.
Everybody's good with it other than that, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Small cell recommendations.
All right.
Julia?
For the small cell, we went back, we went before you, March 24th, regarding our small cell recommendations. And at that meeting, we got the direction from council to kind of focus more or entirely on building rooftops. So we went back and talked to a bunch of industry professionals and got some feedback on some concerns regarding that. And just to let everybody know, maybe Dennis, since you haven't been involved. So the FCC had passed regulation back in 2018 that allows 5G technology to be put into municipal rights of ways. And the municipalities have very little input and financial implications for locating them or restricting them in rights of way. So, we did put into place some design standards, which we'll actually go into in a little bit. But that addressed what those look like in the rights of ways. So, the issues with having these locate on buildings is that the cost for a private rooftop could be anywhere from $300 to $1,500 or more a month in comparison to what the FCC set as a cap of $270 a year in the right of way. And so that has some implications as far as the providers even wanting to look at other options other than the right of way. The process is also lengthy because you're dealing with a private property owner with a specific building type. And you're subject to what that property owner wants as far as their lease terms, location, and so on. There's also physical barriers on, on a lot of rooftops that have existing HVAC or other infrastructure on top of those roofs that would interfere with locating small cells there. With that, so staff had some concerns with providers not really wanting to locate on buildings and opting anyways for their right in the right, for their ability to locate in the right of way. So with that, we really wanted to provide the council with the best information that we could and balance those needs from, that we have on an aesthetic issue and preserving the visual aesthetics in town. And then also balancing the need for residents, visitors, and businesses to have access to data capacity. And the town also to future smart city infrastructure. So, our goal here was to bring those recommendations forward to you. We do have one AT&amp;T location for small cell on the town Welcome Center and rooftop, and that's going forward. And in the meantime, we have received Verizon, not an actual application, but preliminarily seven pole, like pole locations throughout town. And, you know, this really gets to sort of that design factor that we were talking about. And we have also, we think that AT&amp;T is looking at some other pole locations in the town of Breckenridge. So we wanted to come up with this cohesive approach to try to get providers to conform to a better design standard than what we had already drafted last year. And also co-locate if possible. And we have worked with some companies through an RFI process, a request for information process, that would come up with a cohesive approach where they would install some macro sites, which are sort of the bigger sites. So there's two macro sites in their proposal. One is on the Welcome Center and one was proposed on a location that probably will not work as it's historic. And then also utilizing an existing macro site that they have in town, which is on the gondola station here at the base. So then they're proposing six pole, smart poles in the historic district. And so what the, that combination does is the macro sites will provide a, a good coverage blanket, so to speak. And then these smart poles underneath that blanket really handle, address the data capacity issue. So the streaming and downloading that everybody does in town. So, that's sort of a multi-utilization, I guess, approach. And the company that we went with is actually a partnership between American Tower Company, which already has a presence in town, and Newcom, which has a working relationship in town with American Tower. And they're partnering to bring this proposal forward. So, in your packet on page 146, we have the proposed American Tower smart pole that is a new pole that's just starting to be in production now. As I mentioned, there are six. So one of the things that these smart poles do is they are able to, we're understanding that they're able to co-locate different providers on them with this technology. And the height, the colocation meaning two providers on one pole, which would reduce the number of poles throughout town. And there are three primary providers, Verizon, AT&amp;T, and T-Mobile. The height is proposed significantly less than what we have seen proposed in the past. So this is proposed at 18 feet, 11 inches. That's about a little under three and a half feet more than our existing intersection light poles. And hopefully you all were able to go by our street superintendent, put up an extension pole at the corner of Ski Hill and Main that shows the height compared to our existing pole. And then also on the ground sprayed what the diameter of the poles would be. So the width is also a lot less than what we've seen in the past for smart poles. And we've got like a 24.8 inch diameter pole with a decorative base. If the decorative base doesn't fit, we don't need to put that in there. It could decrease to the actual pole width, but, which has the technology in it, which is 14 and a, about 14 and a half inch base diameter. So that's why you saw those two dimensions there. Our existing poles are three and a half inch diameter. So it is quite an increase when you're talking about that, but it's a lot less, as I said, than other poles we've seen. I put in a comparison of the Verizon small cell pole that we have seen, and as you'll see, the light is sort of attached to the side as opposed to the American Tower pole where the light fixtures at the top. They can utilize our Wells Park fixtures as well there at the intersections instead of attaching them onto the side. So this proposal also utilize, ties into our Fiber 9600 project. And they're able to utilize that for the actual providers' fiber connections for the small cells that's required, as well as providing for a public Wi-Fi system throughout the core of town. We did ask them to just look at the core of town for now, although they did provide alternatives to go for outside of the town core as well. And I just want to point out that the diagrams that you see in your, And I just want to point out that the diagrams that you see in your packet are sort of just conceptual at this point because they have not gone out to the providers and worked with them on where their exact coverage gaps are. So we have not proceeded forward with them at that point, at this point. Financially, there, uh, there's no cost to the town with, um, with the exemption of if we needed wifi backhaul, which I'm not sure, I think we can use our existing fiber backhaul on that. So AT, uh, American Tower and Newcom would get their money from the rents that they would charge on the poles. And then the town could also potentially get revenue for the fiber leases as well as the town rents on those, um, wherever they go on to building locations, um, small cell or macro. And then we, we would get the, the $270, I guess, per right of way location on the smart poles, um, a year. So we had some questions for the council. If this sounded like a good direction, are you open to having these specific smart poles in the right of way? Does the council feel comfortable proceeding with this approach? And then would you like to proceed with public wifi? We can either do that on our own because the town is actually able to attach to a bunch of, uh, poles or, uh, buildings and install our own wifi. Or we could incorporate it into this type of pole. The wifi devices are very small. I, I'm not sure anybody would really notice them. I did put the diagram in your packet attachment as well. So we are recommending a staff that we proceed forward into a contract with ATC and Newcom and get them to start working on detailed design drawings and having them reach out to the providers. We know that the providers are looking to locate small cells, um, in the very near future here in Breckenridge. We've been having discussions with them on that. So we do see this as a timely, um, option. I'm sure there's questions.
Yeah, can we ask some questions before we answer the questions?
Yes.
Okay, so this exit three and a half feet, what's that going to do to the lighting, uh, efficiency? And, and will they retrofit our given wattage or whatever it is to, um, to provide the same sort of illumination as it would if it was a lower, um, pole?
Yeah, I mean, Jeffrey, we can get the exact lumens that are, um, on the ground when, when this will be placed another three and a half feet taller, but they're going to use the same exact light fixture.
Yeah, I guess what I would say, while, while you're negotiating with them, make that clear that we want the same efficiency of the lights that we've had in, in the past. And my second question is, uh, like with this, this rapid, um, technology, uh, in five years, are these poles going to be, are there going to be better, better towers that they, that, um, we could have and it'd be less obtrusive and they might kind of retrofit them?
I wish I had a really good answer to that question. I mean, the technology is always changing and this is, this is sort of the cutting edge, I think, on the smart pole technology that's out right now. Other areas that have had, um, small cell poles, maybe it's, um, distributed antenna systems, but they're, they function similarly, but because the technology isn't built into the poles, they end up tacking, you know, they've had to tack things on as the technology moves to 4G and 5G. And so this pole has been, I think this is the best pole option that we've seen, that has all that included inside of it. So yes, technology is going to get better over time.
Well, it's amazing how this has just changed since we started talking about it. And I started complaining about it three years ago. So Tim, is there any way that we can ask in the, in the contract with them that, you know, in, in three years, they look at the poles or in four years or five years, they look at them? And if there's a better product out, they change them out?
Yeah, the answer is we could do that. You're talking about the, uh, the carriers?
I'm talking, you, well, whoever, I mean, American Tower and Newcom are putting these in on our property and paying, and getting paid by somebody else. They're making money on this stuff.
Sure.
So. And then the other question, I think to, to Jeffrey's question is more about, sure, they can put the same fixture on it, but does moving that fixture three and a half feet higher cut down on the, done, what actually translate on the ground for lighting? You know, we, we've been going through this whole thing about, about making sure our intersections are lit correctly and, and that. And what, what happens when our, when our Wells box gets moved three and a half feet higher in the air?
Eric, this is Shannon. So we actually have higher poles at our intersections than we have in mid-block. And part of the reason why we have the higher poles is to get better distribution of light into the intersections. So the higher pole has the potential to actually help us with that. Um, and I think we can work with ATC and Newcom and Mark, uh, Johnston to make sure that we have the right, they don't call them a bulb, they call them something else, but the right bulb, for lack of a better word, in the fixture to provide a sufficient amount of light.
Okay, fair enough. Yep. Other questions?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Aaron.
It's Kelly, but, um, Mike, I just wanted clarification. So now we're talking only about six poles and, um, two macro sites. And then it says, um, also installing camouflaged macro sites, is that right? Those are in addition or is it truly just these eight different things that are going to provide this coverage?
So it's really going to depend on how much coverage throughout town that you want. For right now, when we are focusing on the core of town, six smart poles, two new camouflaged ma- macro sites, which are, is required to be camouflaged by our code. And they already have an existing camouflaged macro site. So maybe that's where it sounded off.
So, but we've totally moved away from what we were talking about a couple of months ago, which was like a pole every block through the historic district?
So if we, the, if we can have the, the providers co-locate and, um, provide a better umbrella of coverage with the macro sites. My understanding is that that will reduce, that should reduce the number of smart poles that are needed because those macro sites, the smart poles are going to, in a way, feed off the macro sites.
But we need more than smix, six small cell smart poles then?
If, um, not as it's proposed for good coverage throughout the, the core of town. You can see the heat maps, maps that are attached and when they, those heat maps turn red, that means full coverage. If we want to go outside of the town core, then yes, there would be more smart poles. And I keep, I also can't tell you that the providers, AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, won't add some of their own poles that aren't associated with American Tower, in wherever they feel they have a gap. So.
I mean, we don't know how many poles, I guess.
Really, we really don't. This is our best, best stab at a comprehensive approach.
Because when the, when the third provider comes in, since right now the poles can only be shared by two, when the third provider decides to come in, let's say it's T-Mobile, they're the third one in, they clearly will, will need poles. And so we will then see additional poles. And I guess the thing, I guess the way I, I'm kind of feeling about this is there's one really liked the look of how just a big and obtrusive they look. I mean, they look like, uh, missiles coming out of a silo back in the 1960s. Coming out of, you know, North Dakota or something. But if we want this technology, I guess we, we need to, to move along in this fashion. But I'm just wondering when the third one comes along, yes, we're going to have, we're going to need additional, you know, sites for poles or something on some roofs or whatever. Is there any way to kind of, kind of plan that in advance in any way, uh, with this American Tower?
Sorry, Gary. This does try to plan that in advance. And so what you'll see is that there's two poles on each, um, intersection. And so, um, it's really up to four providers that could be on an intersection.
Okay.
Per pole. Sorry if I didn't.
Yeah, okay, I admit, if, I, I missed that.
Sorry.
No, I obviously missed it.
Two at every intersection, every intersection?
That's what they're showing.
Okay.
Well, I won't lie, this still irritates the crap out of me that the FCC is just going to, they're just going to tell us what to do. I get it, 5G is going to be a thing. Everybody's going to want to be part of it, but honestly, again, you know, sure, this is better. The 20-foot pole is way better than the, than the 35-foot pole right in front of the welcome center. But, you know, and I know we have to have something or Tim Berry will kill me. So, you know, I, I get it. I get it. And this is better than, and I'm glad we worked with somebody. But I, I still, I still find this just obnoxious that in our historic district, we have, we can't force them to go on buildings because a, a cell provider like AT&amp;T doesn't want to spend more money to go on a, on a private building. They don't want to spend 350 a month. They want to spend 270 because the FCC doesn't care about us or the people that live in this town. They care about AT&amp;T and Verizon and the, the big players that make plenty of money that all of them could afford to go on. So while I am, I'm happy that staff did what they did to get us to this place. I still am absolutely appalled that this is what they're going to make us do.
Go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, Julia, do we have any teeth to require these carriers, these providers to actually use, uh, use, um, American Tower's poles? Or can they just say, eh, I don't like the deal with American Tower. I'm just going to throw my own pole in the right of way.
They, they can do that. And so if we had approved, I don't think they're going to build those, put those poles up until they have a provider sign. I can try to confirm that here and see if they'll email me. But, um, my understanding is they wouldn't put the poles up until they have a provider signed. That's typically how they work. And, but yes, I mean, if the, if the provider has a gap, then they could put up their own pole.
It, only a gap or they just don't like the deal with American Tower? Where I'm going is, Tim, is there any kind of incentive that we can put in this contract with American Tower to, you know, if not require, I don't think we can require, but certainly incent them to get deals done with these guys so that, that we try to consolidate all of the carriers in our poles?
Now, Dick, that's kind of, uh, the overall, over, overarching goal of this contract that we're proposing. You know, both the state and federal law give the cell providers the right to, to, uh, use the town's street lights, uh, and poles or to install their own. That's being cha-challenged to some extent. You've heard, heard me talk about that. But right now, that's what the law is. And we might as well now lay out another issue that has come up today. We, Julia and I have both heard today from AT&amp;T and Verizon. In fact, the Verizon went, went in about 20 minutes ago. The, both AT&amp;T and Verizon are currently objecting to using the smart poles because they say they can't co-locate, that their technology, uh, won't work. Thing that's frustrating about that is part of the, um, reason that we like the small, uh, or the, the smart pole and this provider is this provider has worked, they say, with both Verizon and AT&amp;T before and made it work. So we're not, we're, we're a little baffled at staff level right now why the Denver reps for Verizon and AT&amp;T are saying, oh, no, we can't co-locate. But, uh, Newcom and American Tower say that they, that it's worked in other places. Now, as I said, this just came up today, so we're going to have to try to work this out and we will try to get a better understanding of it. But, uh, that, that is a concern too. If, if we can't force or incentivize and get AT&amp;T and Verizon to co-locate, then that would mean that each of them would want their own pole.
Quite as many.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, and that's part of the issue. Julia, I hasn't gotten to the design guidelines, um, part of the discussion, but I want, just wanted to make you aware right now that there is an issue that has been raised, uh, today by both AT&amp;T and Verizon with respect to co-location. I might also mention that Verizon is now having an issue with height. I didn't hear that from AT&amp;T, but Verizon, if I read the letter correctly, uh, thinks, uh, the 20 is too low, 20 feet is too low. So we still have some work to do.
Yeah. What you're saying?
I just wanted to.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Julia.
I did an email from, um, Newcom. They said that their plan is, um, to have all the carriers on the system and make the design meet their needs. They do not request additional locations. That's coming from Newcom.
So that, that. That's a great goal. I mean, if we can get that done, the town is much better off in my judgment than letting AT&amp;T and Verizon do their own polls.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And Julia, do you?
I'd love to see some of that language in the agreement. You know, I know we can't put teeth in it, but it would be great to have some of the language.
Julia, the.
And Tim?
Yes.
Go ahead, Gary.
I just wanted to, what you just heard back from the Newcom people, your goal is to get all the providers, so that would be all three? Is that the way you would interpret what you just got back?
Yes, that's the way I'm reading it.
Okay, because otherwise we could have 18 poles.
Right. So all three in one pool and, right, is, is what Gary's saying or Julia, you're saying?
On the intersection, so two would be in one pool. And then you'd have just one in the other pool, but there may be another carrier that's a smaller scale carrier out in the future that may need that. Or if somebody just needed the one, they could be on that one.
And Tim, what I'm hearing from you, AT&amp;T is okay with a smart pole. It's just that they won't co-locate. Co-loc, co-locate. But they're okay if they're the only player in the pole?
That was my, uh, reading of it, yes.
Yes, somebody just had a phone call with, um, AT&amp;T's attorney prior to this meeting and, um, it's the co-location issue that is their concern at the time. They, they felt the 20 feet work.
Hey, Julia, are they co-located in the huge tower at the ball fields?
No, that is just Verizon.
Okay.
And how about on the gondola?
On the gondola, American Tower owns that, um, macro site. I know for sure that Verizon is on there. I'm, I'm not sure if anyone else is on that, but, uh, they might text me and let me know. Waiting for their call.
It sounds like we need, the staff needs to work on this a little bit more.
Yeah.
There, obviously there's some questions we can't, you know, I can, I can bitch about these guys all I want. It's not going to do any good. I know that, so.
So just, I have to ask this because I'm curious, but are we making it too easy for these people to come in? Like if we don't set all this up so nicely for them, will they maybe not come in?
No. No, they're, they're, they're coming. No. They're, they're, they're coming.
I love your optimism, Kelly.
I just, it seemed, it used to seem so far off and then all of a sudden now they're here. So I thought like, maybe we could deter them, but I guess not.
No, they could, Kelly, they can ramrod right through this town. I mean, I-
Yeah, I understand.
It's 60 days from application.
Yeah.
You make a deal with the town or you're, you're deemed approved. I mean, it's- You could, you could thank the current FCC chairman for that one.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Remember board, remember board and all the votes were two to one.
Yep, two Republican, one Demi.
Thanks for nothing.
Email back from Newcom and Verizon is the only one at the gondola macro site now, but AT&amp;T is joining soon.
So they're co-locating on the gondola?
Yes.
All right, yeah, this has got to get figured out. This is like-
Yeah.
The jigsaw puzzle with all the pieces aren't-
Well, we're, we're missing- Yeah, all right.
So one thing I'd like to just point out is that we do have these applicants coming and you know, if we had the go-ahead to start working with American Tower and Newcom, then we can get to some more of these detailed answers, I think, as, and have them talk directly to Verizon and AT&amp;T and T-Mobile on our behalf. You know, I'm not sure until they have those discussions, we're gonna have a whole lot of more information for you.
Okay. What do you need from us right now?
So, right now, I'm wondering if you're, if this concept works out with getting these providers co-located on these poles or in this type of configuration, two-on-one and one-on-another, if that's what needs to happen. If you're comfortable with this approach for us to move forward in conversations with American Tower and Newcom, enter into sort of a design phase and the research stage with the providers so that they are able to act on our behalf and move forward to get some of these answers.
How's everybody feel about that? Thumbs up?
Yeah. What are my choices?
At least deal on our behalf, Gary?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you. I know it's not an easy one.
Tim, anything else?
Yeah, we need to have a quick discussion about the design guidelines. Julia had, had worked on those. Julia, you want to speak to where we are on those?
Sure. So as Tim mentioned, we've gotten some comments from Verizon and AT&amp;T on the design guidelines. Specifically, at least from AT&amp;T on co-location. I haven't had a chance to read Verizon's concerns. But we wanted to make some more best practices that now that we have a little bit more idea from the council, what their, your desires are. And maybe what's technically feasible out there. If that's what we find. So we wanted to see if we, we wanted to reorder these to move the small cell pole, or small cells, the highest category of preference being outside of the town right of way. So again, going back to what the council said to locating them on buildings if possible. And then we're sort of working on our backup, you know, our best recommendations for the town right of ways. So moving outside of the town right of way first. Right now it's second. Reducing the pole heights from non-residential areas, we have 40 feet tall. We're recommending 30. And then in residential areas, including the conservation district, all of the conservation district, we're recommending 20 feet in height rather than what's existing in our standards, which is 30 feet. And then recommending co-location if, at this point, if it's possible, we'll continue to work with AT&amp;T and Verizon on that. And then we did add a pole specification, which you've seen, to exhibit A. And so I guess if you have any thoughts on that as we kind of move forward, working with AT&amp;T, Verizon.
Let me also add that based on the eight, the comments this afternoon from Verizon, they are objecting to the 20-foot height. They say it's too low. Too short. So that's just another issue we're gonna have to work through.
Tim, will Newcom take the lead in that discussion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, everybody all right with the other changes that were made in here? Maybe they'll accept it, maybe they won't?
Yeah. What are my choices? Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'm sorry, this ain't kind of in, in a fragmented situation, but that's just the way it's kind of worked out. You may remember the first time we did design guidelines, we had these kind of comments kind of late in the process also. But the comments, you know, are valid. We have to take them into consideration. We'd like to do this on a mutually agreeable basis, if we can. And I think that's the best way to go. We've got to get these revised design guidelines done under our process. As the council may know, we bring these to the council for your review and then we publish them and begin enforcing them in a couple of weeks. Depending upon the magnitude of the revisions that are required based upon the comments from AT&amp;T and Verizon, we'll make a decision whether the changes to the guidelines are so substantial that council needs to review them. If they're minor in nature, with council's permission, we probably would just go ahead and issue them in the beginning.
Everybody okay with that? Gary, yep, yep, thumbs up all around, Dick? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, thank you, thank you, Julia. All right, gang, we have, that's it for the regular session. We have about 20 minutes. We can take care of some other matters, stuff, so we can be done a little earlier or later. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Rick, you want to do a report of the town manager and staff? You're on mute, Rick.
Sorry about that. I want to have a discussion about our Breck Recovery Committee. We had, as you recall, there's Eric and Kelly are the council reps on that. We have some staff on it. We have, there's a total of about 25 people, I believe, BTO, town, number lodging, restaurant, business, people on that, looking at how, what are our strategies we take to line ourselves up with what's coming to state and to the county? We had our first meeting last week, went very well. One of the ideas that's being tossed around by the group, and we told them that we needed to come kind of run this by the full council to see if you're supportive before we continue to vet this and take it a little further, is the concept of closing Main Street down this summer. You know, this topic comes up every five years. But the reason that we think right now it's worth a strong consideration is social distancing is going to be something that I think we need to really promote throughout the summer. We have very narrow sidewalks. It gives us an opportunity to spread people out. We will, we're gonna assume that restaurants are gonna be operating with less seating. It's a possibility to put some types of tables out where parking spaces were before. And, you know, create some areas for people to do takeout and still sit outdoors and enjoy that. There was some talk about whether we should do the 100 block of South Ridge also. And, you know, is this something that we start maybe earlier, just doing on weekends? And then move, you know, if we see, if we see it getting busier, move to, you know, seven days a week. So we had it in our first internal meeting to look at public safety or other related issues to this for an extended closure with the police department, the fire department and Public Works and Ken and myself today. I could tell you that we're, we would not be supportive of closing Ridge. We think that creates a bigger challenge for us in north-south movement if we have to go around that block also, you know, to respond to emergency-type calls and also just in routing traffic through town. The other thing we would really, you know, the day of, the days of just putting up a simple barricade to block a section of roadway is kind of, is, is, is kind of gone, right? There's too many instances of crazy, deranged people that want to drive through crowds and things like that. We tend to try to look at what we call a more hardened closure at, at least the north and the south end. So that, you know, that we create a better safety barrier inside. From, from a talent, a staff perspective, if this is something we were gonna do, we would like to just pick the period that we want to start it, you know, if that's mid-June or third week in June or whatever it is, or end of June, and then run it through for six, eight weeks, whatever we decide we want to do. Because we think we could set it up well to look nice. It would be a little more permanency during that period. We would still allow for east-west movements at streets. We would probably start on the south side of Watson to allow that Watson to, to go through. And then we would, I don't know, we'd go down to probably, I think we said the, you know, the north side of Jefferson. At the other end in there. And then, but we would allow through traffic on Lincoln, Adams, you know, those areas to still get through on there.
Rick, are we talking about turning Main Street into like a walking mall?
Yep. We take away all parking. We wouldn't have any vehicular traffic in there, with the exception of we would always have to have the ability to put a fire truck in there if we had a structured fire. But we're gonna be, if that happens, we're moving people out and clearing the area anyways. But we'd always have to keep that in mind, that we have to always at least have a drive lane in there. There's other, but yeah, it would be a pedestrian mall basically in there to allow for movement.
Now, where would people, if like, like just say, Clinch, if someone wanted to go to Clinch, where would they park? Behind, at the, behind?
Or they walk. I mean, we're, the whole, the whole point is with, with limited seating in restaurants, this is gonna give people the opportunity to grab something to go. You know, you're gonna be limiting the amount of people that you can allow into places anyway. Give them a place to go sit outside. Hopefully, the governor's gonna allow the carry-out booze thing. So you'll be able to go out there, have a beer, have something to eat, or, you know, go to Clinch. And then, you know, potentially, we also talked to Newfeld and, and maybe Dave DePeters about, you know, maybe a little small NRO performance or allow the arts organizations that have music to do something where there'd be, you know, some, you know, some activation on the street that would make it something that people would say, hey, let's go to Breck. We can go and hang out outdoors. It'd be a, you know, it's really more for a draw if we get to the point that, that we're open enough that people can still social distance, they can still have a good time. So that was the, that was the thought, Jeffrey.
And where would, where would they park? Like, like someone coming from Frisco wants to do something on Main Street Breck Ridge. I mean, how, how do we envision that happening?
Well, you're still gonna, you're gonna have your out, you know, you still have the Barney Ford lot, you still have Tiger Dredge, you still have F Lot, which are big parking reservoirs within walking distance to downtown.
Ice House.
Ice House, yeah.
You have the Ice House lot, you know, you have French Street, Clac-Classer. We're obvious, you know, depending on what happens with the gondola will determine whether we have South Gondola open for that type of parking. But, you know, you, yeah, I mean, you're, you're gonna lose a couple hundred parking spaces, you know, maybe not solely, but a hundred and something parking spaces we're gonna lose. But I guess on one hand, the good news is you've got enough people here that are looking for parking.
Yeah.
Right? But I think you're also, the last thing we want to do is, is envision a typical crowded sidewalks.
A street fair.
That we would normally see in the summer, especially this summer.
Well, and I think, I think we, we need to start thinking about a new normal, right? Like, I, I think that people are not going to, especially with restaurants. I don't think that people are going to enjoy restaurants the same way this summer, let alone take out what, what you can do, but also what people will want to do. I think that there will be an added stress of going, going to do things that people normally did before. And so I would like to see, I think that I, I support this. I haven't, I mean, I'd like to see some more details about it, but I really support having more outdoor seating and having, you know, picnic tables that are six feet away from other picnic tables. And so that the rest, that, that people can, can get takeout, have a restaurant experience. And I don't know if that means that servers would come out like into, into, you know, near the Riverwalk and, and the Blue River Plaza and that sort of thing. And, and be more of like runners back and forth between restaurants and that sort of thing. I just, I think the more, I think this is adapt or die time. And the more that the town can support our businesses in a safe way so that our, our, our visitors, but real, but also our locals. Like, I don't know how much, you know, we, we don't know how much our town's going to open up. We don't know what's gonna happen next or the next wave and that, that sort of thing. But even just for our locals to enjoy restaurants again in a different way because we have a new normal.
Yeah.
There's a lot of details, yeah. There's a lot of details that gotta be worked out. We have, I, I need to understand, we have to work with the restaurant community to understand what delivery looks like. I know many of them still access or want to access off of Main. So we have, there's a lot of details and we'll, we'll work through those. We just need to know if you guys are in favor of continuing to explore this, the general concept.
You, you know, I think it's very intriguing. This is, this is our chance to really see if it works. I mean, we always talk about, well, can we try it? You know, and, and this is a chance to, to do it for, you know, eight, 10 weeks and see if it works. And Rick, you know, I, I think, you know, what, what the, you know, what your group wants to do and just, just close it and leave it closed for that period of time is what we should do anyway, because, you know, we give, need to give it a, a real, real shot to work. So we need to, you know, do the, the closures well and promoted and really, you know, if, if the first idea doesn't work, we need to keep after it and really try to make it. We're giving it a best go. Secondly, I, I have concerns about just having, you know, some kind of open alcohol service all up and down Main Street. I think it'll, it'll become a, a bit too much of a party, but can, can we contain them in beer gardens or, or something? I know that's harder with social distancing, but I just, I have some real concerns of the unintended consequences of just having, you know, open container throughout town during this period. I, I think we see a lot of the issues during Oktoberfest and, and I'm not sure that's who we want to be.
Well, and right now, I don't, you can't buy liquor without buying food. So, I, I mean, I don't, I think we can definitely, you know, you, you have to go, go get, get it yourself. You have to, you can only buy it with food. I mean, I think there are ways we could do that. Dick, the other thing I was thinking for Ridge Street, because I, I knew Rick was not a fan of, you know, closing two full streets, is to do it on the top deck of the parking structure across from Fatty's. So if this would work down on, on Main Street, you can close that off and allow, you know, the businesses on Ridge Street to access something similar just across the street or in the Barney Ford, you know, maybe in the Barney Ford parking lot so that, you know, there was some, you could, you could let the businesses up there have some access also.
I know, I know that our Public Works is talking with the fire department, but I know that, I know red, white, and blue is not comfortable with Ridge Street.
Yeah.
They're comfortable working with everybody on Main Street, but they have concerns on Ridge Street. I don't know the details, but I'm sure James and the, and whomever else.
Gary, they were on our call. They were on the call today.
And did they express some misgivings with respect to Ridge?
Well, just like we did, yeah, because, you know, that people want to drive fast and go to these calls and-
Yeah. Well, I'm just responding to, you know, Eric, Eric's comment. Just make sure we're, we've got everybody in the loop.
We looped them in, then Jay, Jay was, Jay Nelson's on the call, playing a call with us. So this is exactly what you said, so.
Okay.
And when it comes, when it comes time to barricade streets, we got a bunch of buses that aren't doing anything right now, so.
Don't use the electric buses, though.
Those could be seating during rainstorms, too. Those could be seating during rainstorms, too.
All right. So I'm not hearing anybody that's got a lot of opposition to this right now, so.
I think it's a great idea.
Devils in the details, that's for sure.
Yeah.
What else you got, Rick?
We're also, I just want you to know right now, we're continuing to keep the skate park closed and we're getting some pushback from the skaters. We want to be consistent with what's going on countywide and Silverthorne and Frisco have theirs closed. We did close the basketball court today because we've seen, continued to see problems there with larger groups. And so that's getting shut down, if not today, tomorrow. You know, we're getting pushed back that why can't the skater skate when the turf field is open for use? But there's a big difference in the size of those two amenities and the ability for people to spread out. And so that's just how we're doing it. We'll continue to evaluate it. And certainly, we would like to, to be able to open it at some point if things relax or change. But for right now, that's kind of our stance. But I would, some of you may start getting contacted by people asking about that.
I mean, at some point, if we decide to do it, can't we just say 10, 10 people at a time? And that's how it goes. And the minute we look out there and there's more than 10, you know, you self-police it and then we shut it down.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fair.
To have someplace for some of these people to go now. This has been a difficult, you know, this has been difficult for people. It's not World War II difficult, but it's still been difficult. And it would be nice to give some people an outlet if that's what they like to do. You know, if we could figure out a way to do it, I, I would support us figuring out a way to make this work, especially with the turf field open. If the turf field wasn't open, I'd say, oh, we got everything closed. But that, I don't know, you know, it seems.
Yeah, I agree. With some of the things that are opening, I question. But the skate park, I feel like it's outside. You can maintain six feet of distance. And I, I agree with Eric. Let's see what happens.
I, I do agree with Eric with having a quantified number and asking for self-policing. And if it doesn't work, then we shut it down. You know, it might not, but I, I agree. I think, I think people are going wacky. And, and any outlet we can give them. But again, I think we have to say, if you, if you screw this up, we're shutting it down.
For those of you that are more familiar with a skate park and how people use it, how long, how long do people use it? When they get over there on their board, how long do they stay?
Oh, hours.
Hours.
All right, because what, I think what you're going to have then is a situation where if it's 10, pick a number. The first 10 that get there could be there for a bunch of hours. And, you know, others show up and go, hey, it's my turn. And they basically go, when I'm finished. And then you're going, you're going to get a situation, either you're going to have some fights or you're going to basically have, you know, everybody just loading in, so.
You know what we could do, Gary, is, is say, okay, is put up a sign, have it, put it out there. Yeah, say 15 people maximum and we ask you to stay only an hour or two. And, and it could teach you, it could be kind of a, a, a lesson in responsibility and cooperation. Who knows? It might not work. It probably wouldn't when that was.
I mean, that's a great idea, Jeffrey. I think you have to address how long somebody can be there. Because it's not fair for.
Yeah.
I want to hear what Scott has to say.
Scott had his hand.
Yeah, but you could only hear every, every other word, so.
I know it. Good words.
Scott's going to tell you what the, what the industry standard is right now, and that's not to open them, so.
That is correct. So, County has theirs closed. You know, 75% of the programs across the country have theirs closed. If we were to open ours, I can promise you, Frisco and Silverthorne hadn't opened theirs. I can tell you where the gathering would be. And I think you're opening yourself up to what's the town doing by not controlling 10 people or less, you know, is the expectation, and you've got a bunch of people out there. We also have a fair number of people who are already going over the barriers and skating. We're having to chase them out as it is. And so if we, I mean, we're doing it either way. And I can tell you from Jim Baird's perspective, it's fairly untenable to try to manage the 10-person limit in that space. That's what, those were his words. And he said I could, he knew I was able to speak tonight. But he basically said he really had a hard time with trying to manage that. And we've had signs up that it's been closed and we've had a large group of folks gathering there since the weather turned.
Wow.
Yeah.
That just killed my buzz.
And it becomes enforcement.
I'll tell you, without input, it's not's input, I, I'd say close it.
It's a tough call, but, you know, I think with what's going on, I, I think our community is getting eased into a false sense of security in terms of this thing. And, and I, I guess I don't want to contribute to it as much as I would like to have equality with these guys. But, you know, we've got to have the same standard with the turf field, too. It's, it's abused from time to time as well.
And our answer to that is that if you see, you know, more than 10 people gathering in this turf field, then you should call the police. You should call the non-emergency dispatch and say, there's a social gathering over there and we need to, need to get out of there. But that's, so, so agreed. We, but we also need to set ourselves up for success in a way that we can actually make.
And I, I agree with that. Has a county released any information for a plan to open the skate parks? Or anything like that about what part of the phases that is or any? Because I think that would help people too, just to have this idea of, okay, when there's so much decline or, and if, you know, by May 11th or something like that, I think that would be something for people to plan on.
I think you could say that during this current public health order, which is, I understand Amy Winelet saying about two weeks from that last discussion, which was yesterday. So that's the best I could give people for when they would reevaluate that public health order.
I think it's a, I don't like the message that the turf field's okay, but the skate park's not. I, I just, I, you know, you go by the turf field, there's kids clustered near each other. We're not, what's, you know, it's, I don't think you can have one or the other. I don't think soccer's cool, but we don't trust skaters, so.
Yeah.
I just don't, I don't like the message. I'm not saying which way we should go on this, but I think that's a, that's just not who we are. You know, some groups, okay, they're, they're not that different, those two areas. And the, the people that use them are not that different in, in their ability to self-isolate, so.
I have a question. Is this going to be addressed in part of the reopening of town? Or is this an isolated discussion for right now?
Well, we don't control that decision for the reopening of town right now. I mean, when it comes to, when it comes to certain things being, you know, do we, we don't decide when we get to open the rec center. We get that direction from public health. So we follow the queue. We have a little bit discretion on some of these things that aren't necessarily called out, like a basketball court or an outdoor basketball court or, you know, a turf field that aren't there. Because those kind of things are considered an outdoor recreation where as long as you're not, you know, you're trying to create social distancing and, and doing those types of things that you're allowed to do it. That's where we have some discretion. So we're trying to be consistent countywide in how we handle some of these things, but.
And we can decide to wait longer than allowed for the rec center if we wanted to, right, Rick? Like we, they don't need us to open up the rec center. Yeah.
Richter, you just can't be more lenient.
Not that I'm saying I want to do that.
All right, let us, let us have, we're, we're troubled with the mixed messaging also of the turf field. We try to explain it, but people don't buy it, you know, because there is, it's intermittent. I want to understand how, I want to understand if we're having problems or if we're, if we're looking at that. Because we told them, it's clearly posted. If there's problems, we shut it down, so. But as the weather gets nicer, we shut down that turf field, too. We're going to hear from a lot of people.
Absolutely. Going to get harder. Okay, we have a couple minutes before we start the night meeting. Actually, we have a minute. So Benny, you need to run real quick. I'm going to start in a minute.
Yeah, well.
Now, okay, let's try to fire through this. We've got a bunch of legislative stuff.
Aaron, Aaron, I, I think you need to be with Jeffrey even on these virtual meetings.
Absolutely. All right, it's seven o'clock. I guess we'll wait a minute for Dennis and Jeffrey both come back. For those of you in the public, the chat function is now disabled, just so you all know. If you want to ask a question or pose a comment for public, for the public hearing portions, please do so on the Q and A. All right, Jeffrey, we're getting started. So use the Q and A tab at the bottom to post your questions so they're done for the record. And don't use the chat anymore. And with that, I'd like to call to order the town council regular meeting for Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. It is 7:01 PM. Welcome to virtual council chambers. We begin with roll call, please.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron.
You're muted.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Coon.
Here.
Ms. Giello.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, and with that, we have approval of the minutes for March 20, March 24, March 26, April 10, and April 21. Anybody have any changes, correct?
No, they, they're really good minutes. Pretty accurate, I felt.
And as presented, we have approval of the agenda. Rick, anything?
Yes, I would like to add under new business other, a need to do a formal vote for the mayor pro temp position.
Oh, this could be tough. All right, communications to council. Have we gotten anything, any citizens' comments I need to read out right now? It looks like none. So we move to the Breckenridge Ski Resort update. Do we have John Bueller with us? Nope. Well, we could move on. And if he shows up, we can wedge him in.
Can you guys hear me?
Oh, hey, John.
There he is.
Hey.
Now.
It's, it's good to see everybody.
But we can hear you.
Okay, that's good. I don't need to be seen, that's for sure. So Mr. Mayor, Mr. Carlton, Mr. Bergeron, Ms. Owens, I would love to congratulate you on being re-elected to town council. And to Mr. Coon for being elected first time on town council.
Thanks, John.
Thanks. Thank you.
I guess, you know, I would start by saying, I've seen many different and challenging situations in my career. However, what we're all managing through right now is unprecedented. And we continually monitor what's happening nationally, regionally, and locally. And we are certainly focused, just like you are, and what I've been listening to is how thoughtful the decision-making is. And we are certainly doing the same internally and externally and not rushing to decisions. In terms of operations, you know, there's just a lot of unknowns right now. And we're doing our very best to try and plan ahead without knowing exactly what the future holds. You know, we continue to monitor public health guidelines around COVID-19. And we're hopeful to reopen the mountain operations. But it's too early to announce any specific opening dates or activities. Related to our capital, unfortunately, the new Peak Seven lift is on hold. It's a project that we hope that we can tackle this next summer. And next winter operations, again, already beginning to think about how that looks and excited for that to come around. We're also closely monitoring and being involved in a part of the public health orders and, and committees, as well as the county committees. So that we are aligned and ready to open up with safe operations. That's this kind of status of operations from a marketing perspective. You know, we're trying our best to look ahead at summer, winter marketing efforts. But again, being thoughtful and considerate about how we should approach that based on the current situation and all the unknowns, as well as our guest mindset and where they are right now. So our teams, based on that, our teams are building out summer and winter plans so that we can be ready to engage when the time's right. I think the, the latest and newest news out there for us in terms of marketing is Epic Pass and the credits. So we greatly value the pass holders and we received a lot of inquiries about what we might do to address our pass holders following the abrupt end in March. And so yesterday, we announced that we were providing the 2019-20 season pass holders credits of at least 20% and up to 80% if they were unable to use their pass at all. Additionally, we introduced Epic coverage for the 2021 season, which will provide cash refunds to pass holders for certain resort closures, including events just like this COVID-19, as well as refunds for job loss, illness, and other eligible personal events. Which is, you know, pretty amazing that that's where we're headed and what we've done as a company. Given the current situation, we know guests might be uncertain about what they want to do for next winter. So we've moved all of our spring deadlines to Labor Day. And credits are valid through Labor Day as well. So if uncertainty continues, we may reassess that deadline as it gets closer. I guess from a community and employee perspective, I think, you know, one, one of the things we know for sure right now is that we can do all, we can all do our best to support our employees and the community. And in doing so, you know, we, we're just getting into spring break. We had ordered a ton of food. We were stocked and loaded and ready to go. And we've given more than 6,000 pounds of food to local food banks.
Jesus.
And more than 15,000 pounds between Breck and Keystone combined.
Wow.
So that's, that's been, that's been a home run. And we hope that everyone in the community has been able to benefit from that. The Cat Amsterdam, Amsterdam Foundation has donated $1 million to Epic Promise Foundation across our company to support our employees and specifically those impacted by the COVID-19. And $200,000 in Summit County to FERC and the Summit County Cares Fund. Employee assistance, and I talk about housing. So we're providing support to help our employees get back home and supporting those that can't get home with housing, including free rent this month. You know, we had to make a tough decision and furlough employees. While, as you can imagine, and so many in town have had to do that, it's incredibly challenging and heartbreaking decision to have to make. And we're supporting these groups of employees by continuing their healthcare coverage and covering those costs for them. And we hope to have our employees back as soon as possible. But again, we're unsure at this point when that'll be. And of course, we have free counseling resources for our employees, including our seasonal year-round and furlough employees through Epic Wellness. And then in terms of economic recovery, you know, we have resort leadership members participating, like I said earlier, in community economic recovery teams, as well as with Summit Chamber efforts and the county. And then I guess, you know, even in these challenging times, I would say, what I've seen in this community, in our businesses, in our organizations, is a lot of people doing a lot of great work and being considerate of one another, which I think is exactly what and who we are as a community. So I think the one thing is, let's just all make sure that we follow the guidelines of the state and local officials to do our part so that sooner than later, we can all get back to what we do and what we love, which is this community and the organizations we work with and work for. And that is the end of my update for you guys.
Thanks. Anybody have questions for John?
No, I just echo, I, this is really heartening what our, what our town has, and our, our community, our government. Everyone has done, our nonprofits have really stepped up, as has, as has the ski resort, so thanks.
Thank all of you.
Thanks, John.
Right. Have a great night, John.
Thank you.
Okay, gang, we got some continued business. We got second readings. The first is Council Bill number seven, series 2020. This is an ordinance amending chapter one of Title VIII of the Breckenridge Town Code by amending the International Residential Code 2018 edition and the International Energy Conservation Code 2018 edition. Tim.
Thank you, Eric. This ordinance comes on for second reading tonight, having been continued a couple of times to allow staff to continue to work with the Builders Association. You heard from Eli at the work session about his efforts to reach out to the Builders Association. I think staff believes that the ordinance is in a good form, that it is proper to include it in the town's building code. And there, there's one proposed amendment. Actually, there are two amendments that repeat themselves. And Eli mentioned those today having to do with a remodel. So I know that Eli is on the, is on the line here, and if there are any technical questions, either from the council or from the public, he can speak to those. Otherwise, I think it's staff's request and recommendation that the ordinance be approved in the form that is in the agenda packet.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for staff? Is there anyone in the public that would like to send a Q and A on this matter? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
There's one. Wait, hold on. There's a, there's a question. There's something here. Jennifer Schenk has a comment. Do you see that, Eric?
In general, she's thanking us for this being a critical stepping stone. HC3 believes these codes are important, and thanks for consideration of adoption. And she wants to thank staff for collaboration also. So that'll be put into the record. Jess Hoover and Jen Schenk, thank you so much, and thanks for their help on this also, helping Eli and the staff out. All right, is there a motion, Jeffrey?
I move we pass a second reading Council Bill number seven, series 2020, in the form that's in the agenda packet.
Thanks, Jeffrey.
Nice. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Giallo.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have a second reading of Council Bill number 10, series 2020, an ordinance amending chapter one of Title IX of the Breckenridge Town Code, known as the Town of Breckenridge Development Code by amending policy 24 absolute and policy 24 relative concerning housing.
Mayor and council, this ordinance again comes on for second reading. The staff thinks that it needs some additional, staff knows we need some additional time to continue working on this ordinance. Staff recognizes the overall importance of this policy to the town, but it is a fairly substantial philosophical change. And we need to make sure that we've got all of the issues covered in the ordinance that we believe need to. So it is staff's recommendation that the council continue second reading to the May 26, 2020 town council meeting.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim on this? Now there is no public hearing. Is there a motion for a continuance?
I move we, we move Council Bill number 10, series 2020, postpone it till the May 26 council meeting.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No roll call.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Ms. Giallo.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have second reading of Council Bill number 10, or number 12, series 2020, ordinance amending chapter four of Title III of the Breckenridge Town Code, known as the public accommodate, Breckenridge Public Accommodation Tax Ordinance.
This, this ordinance was drafted to, or to amend the town's accommodation tax ordinance to mirror the language in the Denver ordinance that was upheld last year by the Colorado Supreme Court. I think everyone's aware that the town litigated with the online travel companies for a number of years. We ultimately did not prevail based in, well, in significant part upon the language in our current ordinance. Staff believes that by using the Denver language as a model for the town's ordinance, that we will be in a position to enforce the town's ordinance against the online travel companies. There are no changes to the ordinance from first reading.
Thank you. Any questions for Tim? Public want a Q and A this one? All right, no. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move we pass Council Bill number 12, 2020, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Giallo.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have first reading of Council Bill number 14, series 2020, an ordinance authorizing the sale of town-owned real property, Smuggler Silent Friend Iron and Crown Point, Point Loads.
I guess that's me. Last year, the town purchased these mining claims. We have an arrangement with the Summit County Government to convey 50% interest. So at the end of the day, the town and the county will each own 50% interest in the property, which is the way the town has traditionally worked with Summit County on these kind of open space purchases. As the council knows that to sell or convey town land requires either an election or an ordinance. Staff believes the ordinance is the appropriate way to go. And you have the ordinance and the proposed agreement. Staff recommends the adoption of the ordinance.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for staff? No, anyone in the public would like to comment on this through the Q and A button? No, we have another new council person joining us, if you'll see, sitting on Kelly's lap. Any, seeing no public comment, public comment period is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill number 14, 2020, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Second. There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Wolf. Oh, sorry, Mr. Coon. You got me.
I didn't say, yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Ms. Giallo.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have first reading of Council Bill number 15, series 2020. This is an ordinance approving a lease with Zwaig Law, PC, Unit 200, Breck Professional Building, 130 Skeeple Road.
Mayor and council, you're required to approve any leases longer than one year in length for town-owned property. This particular lease is a tenant in the Breck Professional Building, which is owned by the town. Their current tenant, they desire to renew a lease for a five-year period with an option to do an additional five years after that. Everything else in the lease would be fairly standard, and we would recommend council approval.
Any questions? No, anyone in the public like to comment through the Q and A? Seeing none. Comment here, period is closed. Is there a motion?
First reading, I move we pass Council Bill number 15, 2020, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, roll call.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Ms. Giallo.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have a resolution number 13, series 2020, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Summit County, Colorado. This is recreation road and trail management.
This resolution, if adopted, would approve the IGA with Summit County Government dealing with trail maintenance and construction on the jointly owned open space parcels. We have a number of those. We need to finalize and come to a clear agreement with respect to the duties of maintenance and construction. Staff has negotiated this agreement with Summit County and recommends its approval.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions for Tim or Scott? No, anyone in the public wish to comment via the Q and A button? Seeing none, motion please.
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill number 13, series 2020, the title which has been read into the record.
Jeffrey, hang on. This is a resolution.
Oh, yeah, I was just about to correct you on that one, Tim. I move we pass resolution number 13, series 2020, the title which has been read into the record.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Ms. Giallo.
Yes.
Mr. Coon.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Okay, I have, as most of you know, put Jeffrey forward for the pro tem position. But I feel like somebody else should make the motion if there's anybody that, so what, Jeffrey, you can't move yourself.
Oh.
I would like to nominate Jeffrey for pro tem, mayor pro tem.
Second.
Second.
Can we have a speech? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Jeffrey's the pro tem.
That was close. I was worried about that one.
Right. Let's go to planning commission decisions real quick. Is there anything for a call up? Nope. All right, we move on. Went through the report of the town manager and staff. So committee assignments will be going forward. Jeffrey's pro tem. BTO and childcare will be handled by Kelly Owens. Housing will be Gary Gallagher and Dick Carlton. Breck Historic will be Dennis. BCA will be Gary Gallagher, continuing his fine work corralling that crew. I will take over water myself. Events will be Dick Carlton and BOSAC for Aaron Gilio. That sound okay with everybody?
And Grant, who will still be Dick and me.
You know, I didn't even think about Grants. Is any, Dick, do you want to stay on that with Jeffrey, or do we want to change?
I'd love to.
Okay, we'll stick with that for this, this round, and then maybe switch it up for the next. With that, has anybody had any meetings that they want to?
I had one. I had one last night with BOSAC.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I apologize ahead of time, as I am not as practiced on these updates as Jeffrey.
Please.
But it was our, we had some updates from, from Ann, and she, we started to talk about a friend of Breckenridge Trails 2020 tentative dates. So we have dates out there to work on trails, one of the new trails for hikers and mountain bikers traveling uphill. Connects the bottom of the Barney Ford Trail and the Barney Ford Clearcut area. So, and once that's complete, whole downhill mountain biking only trail in that area. And then also for volunteering, if, I mean, and this is all tentative, right? We don't know what volunteering will look like for, for BOSAC this summer. Sorry, I lost my place. Removing Young Lodge Pole in the Barney Ford Clearcut Area as part of an Aspen Study with the Nature Conservancy. So we talked about that. We talked about commercial and non, the start of commercial and nonprofit license agreements, that collection of those. I mean, it's not the beginning of the continuance of those. Removing the Ferry Forest, as we've talked about before, that that will happen this summer, because it's not our land. Some joint forestry efforts with the Wellington Project, the Wellington Cutting. And then we also talked about some plans for communication and upping that communication. We're a little bit worried with everything that's going on with COVID and other, other things right now that people will be caught by surprise with the Wellington cuts. The Smuggler Claims, which we talked about today. Continuing with the River Park Phase Two, however, with some, some budget cuts and for some other reasons, too. The Fisherman's Landing will be removed from that plan. And it was also the annual meeting, so we talked about the responsibilities of BOSAC and the open space and trails work plan, and we also discussed the budget.
Excellent. Jeffrey, I can't believe all these years, he shows up and picks the Ferry Forest out.
Yeah, I know. You know what? She, I'm all about the kids. Hey, can I make our, can I make an observation, Aaron, on this, and hopefully you'll take this back to BOSAC? If we're going to create any downhill-only trail and build an uphill trail for hikers and bikers, I would like that uphill trail, or if, you know, hopefully the council would back us to talk about it. I want that, I'd like that uphill trail to be uphill only for mountain bikers and round trip for hikers. Unlike the, the side, the backdoor trail, that it's, it's uphill recommended. That, that Moonstone area, the Barney Ford area is a big, is a, you know, kind of the epicenter for hikers. I would hate to have any hiker thinking, well, this is an uphill recommended trail, yet downhill riders to be allowed to come down it. So that's, that will be my, that's my suggestion of that one.
Good enough. Anything else for Aaron? Okay. Anybody else have any meeting they want to report on? I'll take that and no. Any other matters, Jeffrey?
Yes, I have one. I wonder if there's any way of, if I have, we have a consensus, an agreement to put up signs in front of City Market, the post office, any other stores that we feel high traffic, strongly recommended or requiring folks to wear masks?
Well, I think the county order requires it, doesn't it?
But there's no signs. There's no, there's no, I mean, what I want, you know, just within the town of Breckenridge, in front of City Market, I guess we'd have to get City Market, the post office to agree, but saying the sound of Breckenridge, the county and the sound of Breckenridge, can we say requires, or can we say strongly suggests, whatever the verbiage might be? I, I think, yeah, I, I think that's something that we should consider.
And is it required by the county? And if so, what is the enforcement?
I don't know.
Required if you can't maintain six, which in some of those places you can't, so I, I think there's a broader discussion on masks that we need to have maybe next Tuesday and let staff think about this, because at some point we reopen May 3, or even now, I, I almost feel like, like the core should be mandatory. You know, not walking up and down Wellington or going out on your bike on French Gulch, but you can't maintain safe distance on the sidewalks in Breck. So I think we should let staff sort of grind through that, and maybe next Tuesday, we can talk about that more. Fair enough, Jeffrey. Fair enough, yeah. Anything else? No, Dennis?
I have some.
Go ahead.
Dennis, anything?
Are we gonna, are we gonna have an update on round two of the business relief? Are we gonna let that go until next week?
We will do that on Tuesday. We're gonna let you and Gary are gonna talk about that going forward.
Okay.
Dick, anything?
Hey, I.
Gary?
I have nothing at the moment, no.
I have one more. You know, this is just such the new reality, and we're not, we're not in person, we're not together, there's no group hugs. But I would like to just thank Wendy Wolf for eight years of service and continuing to serve the town. And, and, yeah, she's, she is, she's been wonderful, and certainly an app replacement is. and certainly an apt replacement as Dennis, but it's kind of like, it's kind of pale, the appreciation I'd like to give her in person, but I guess the best we could, at the sound where I did it.
No, thanks for taking my other matter, by the way.
Okay, sorry. All right, I'll, yeah, I'll let you go.
Yeah, so, oh, I, I do have...
Hey, Aaron, I'm just going in order on my screen.
So I know we're going to talk more about this next week, but since messaging is already going out, and Haley did such a great job of creating those graphics, and I just, for my own conscience, need to get it out, that I wish that some of these things are, it is safer at home. And I know that that's, I feel like that statement is going to be taken for granted, but every time that you go out and go to some of these services, just because you can, you know, at some point, go get a massage or whatever, you're, you're still taking on risk. And so I just want to make sure that that's clear. And I know in some of these graphics, it's there, but it's, it's at the very end. And I'd, I'd kind of like to see that at the beginning, or something like, go out at, at your own risk. I just, I feel like, even though I, I want people to have their personal freedoms and to have these choices, but at the same time, there's still a risk, and it's not because it's safer out there, it's because there may be a decline, you know, it's, so anyway, that's mighty sense.
Fair enough. Thanks, Aaron.
I was wondering, I'm sure that we have it posted someplace, but can you tell for the people who are watching where the link to that county, like, protocol paper that Shannon linked us to? It, it's for, you know, salons and things like that, that they need to have this protocol in place before they open?
It is on the county website.
It is, but it's really hard to find. In fact, I looked all over for it, and then I finally went back to Shannon's email and just, you know, pressed it from there, so...
Go ahead, Rick. Rick?
So what we're gonna do, what we're gonna be sharing with the Breck Committee tomorrow is that we have, we created an internal resource team of two people that will be monitoring a phone line and a special email address called TOBBusinessProtocol@TownofBreckinridge.com, where we are gonna ask people that have questions about, what is this? What is this? What is this? They email or call, and we'll have people that can help navigate these protocol forms and the completion of those. You know, people think they have to fill the form out and get it submitted somewhere and have it approved. That's not the case. So these are all things that we gotta let people know. They just have to submit the, they have to fill out the form to show that they've completed a plan, and they have to post it in their building, so...
So they don't submit it anywhere? That's a question that I've been asked a bunch of times.
No.
Okay. Good to know.
We're gonna create this resource team to help people with all of these questions that they have, so...
Got it?
Okay.
Anybody else have?
Thank you.
All right, let me just, Jeffrey already did it, but, you know, and on behalf of everybody, let me just thank Wendy for her wonderful years of services, community. I know they're not over. I know we can call on her at any point. She will drop everything she's doing, become running to assist us. But the things that she has done for our community and taking on the difficult challenges that many of us didn't want anything to do with, like the whole paid parking and standing in front of City Market. And, you know, it takes a special person to do the kind of thing that Wendy has done for this community. And most people don't realize what a critical member of the town council she was during the last eight years, but she was. She was important to all of us, and Dennis has big shoes to fill. Not to say that Wendy has big feet, but she really, anytime you needed anybody to do anything, Wendy had her hand up. And the community owes her a debt of gratitude for what she did. Like Jeffrey said, I wish she could be, we could be together so that we could celebrate what she did. But Wendy, if you're out there, and I, I think you were watching earlier, thank you. Thank you, bottom of all of our hearts. Just thank you for your wonderful service to our community. Ricky, were you gonna add something?
Absolutely.
Well, I certainly, when you're done with that, I would certainly echo everything, and...
Wendy, thanks. Thanks for me. Thanks for helping me be a better mayor.
Thanks, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy. If I ever said anything to offend you, I'm sorry.
He'll continue to.
Eric, I have two very quick things before you close out.
Please.
So the special meeting that we're gonna have on Tuesday, I don't want to run into another problem and butt it up too tight to the Planning Commission. So could, could you start at 3:00 PM, everybody, on Tuesday?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
Aaron?
Sir?
Okay, 3:00 PM Tuesday.
3:00 PM on Tuesday. The other thing, I want to make sure I understood on the memorial art piece. I've already been in communication with Matt. We're gonna work with the family to make sure we have language in there that would allow us to move that within that general vicinity, as long as it's near the skate park. So as long as you're, you guys are okay with that art piece, we're gonna look to see if we can locate it in farther away from the rec pass in, into that open, and if it ever get, you know, if the, if we ever expand the skate park at some point in the future, we would just have the ability to move it a few feet to get it out of the way of that, and I think that's probably the best way to proceed.
Outstanding. Everybody good with that? Thumbs up?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so for those of you watching, thank you for joining us at council. Thanks to council for, you know, everything you've been doing lately. I know it's been a, been a grind. In particular, thanks to Rick, and thanks to the staff, and thanks to Shannon Haines, who is busted up tonight after a, after a bike crash. Yeah, yeah. Eighty-pound Malibu got in it with her, and they, anyway. Rick can fill you in. Meeting on Tuesday for talk about COVID. In the meantime, I'll be doing daily updates and, and anything else you need, either Town of Breckinridge website or mayor@TownofBreckinridge.com, and that's how you can get to the group of us at any point. So thanks again, and thanks to the community for hanging with us.
All right.
And with that, we are adjourned.
All right.
Night, all.
Thank you.